Good evening, everybody. I would like to call this meeting to order. We are at 6:02. Adjustments to the agenda 2.0. I had a request for the executive session to discuss both negotiations of personnel, so we'll make that 8.0 and we'll make adjustment 9.0. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Hearing, hearing, yeah, sorry.
It's not an adjustment to the agenda, but maybe we're going to circulate anybody who is willing to sign my petition for two more years on the school board.
We would be happy to entertain that.
Thank you.
We'll send it that way.
No pressure, you don't have to sign a petition, or you can run for school board. There's an opening.
It is not an endorsement of any particular person. It is merely a ratification to put them down. The 3.0 then, audience and communications. I know that I had a request to have some folks present during this period of time, and I guess I will let them do that. Do you want to go ahead and tell us?
... Hi, this is Heidi. Hi, I'm Alex. And I'm also an essential skills teacher at Hines Community School. I started out in middle school. I started out as a middle school essential skills teacher. I'm a reading specialist. And four years ago, I moved back to grade three to five.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And I just wanted to inform to both of you that I did get the email and sent it off to the other board members. So we have seen the letter that you wrote on the 15th of July.
So we've put together a PowerPoint presentation. We asked, we asked for 15 minutes to be able to present our reasoning for keeping the Essential Skills Program at Hines Community School. And we wanted to see some of the things that we did and some of the people who served and present a case of why it's important to keep this. I'm giving you a copy. Would you like a copy of PowerPoint just to be able to look at pages?
You're welcome.
There's a lot of information on here. We tried to be really concise, but I think we... So it basically begins with what is Essential Skills? And I'm just going to quickly start to the triangle here that I have up on the wall that this school follows this multi-tiered approach to learning. We have Tier One, which is all of the students receiving their first instruction. We have a Tier Two, which is the students who are needing additional support for instruction. They're not quite making standards in areas. And we have a, I can't say right now. Betsy would probably be able to talk more about the percentage of the population we have. And then we have our red area up here is the special education population. And the idea of the tier model is that the Essential Skills Program reaches the Tier Two students. But the idea is that being multi-tiered, if you're trying to move students through and to keep them fluid, going from Tier Two back to Tier One. And it's based on our instruction on reading, writing, and math, using a variety of assessments and teacher recommendation to determine which students need to have additional instruction. And as you can see here, there are a lot of things that we do. We're highly experienced. We're training teachers. And I, you know, the current proposal is to bring in and to replace the licensed teachers with some highly skilled paraprofessionals that will not match the expertise and the experience that we have currently have between the Essential Skills teachers at Hines Community School. I also want to point to this bottom point, the instruction that leads to acceleration for student teacher expertise. There is evidence that shows that students can make progress by having paraprofessionals or para, para-specialists working with them. But what the object is, is for us to accelerate the learning of these Tier Two students, to really accelerate it. It's not enough for them just to be going steady evenly across. It is important that we get them to a place where if they've been going steadily across, we need as Essential Skills teachers, by doing assessments and getting to know these students and working collaboratively with teachers, to move them up to a level that they can gain independence and be meeting the standards. So acceleration is important, and that acceleration only comes with having expert teachers. This is the, this is how we identify the students. We collaborate with classroom teachers. There's Kid Talk, EST. These are all the assessments that we use to determine it. These are, these assessments we have developed over the years. And it's not something anybody can just come in and sit down and do a quick assessment. The people that are here and those of us who have been teaching and working with students in these areas, in these Tier Two students through the years, we know these assessments. We know them well, and we know how to, to provide the appropriate learning for students based on what that data tells us. Lots of responsibility is there on your sheet. You can, you can go through it and read it at your leisure, but I will touch on a few points. Joyce, you may also, something else may jump out at you. And anytime if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask.
I have a question. Have you read that? When you're working with a student, is it always outside the classroom?
No. Sometimes it's inside the classroom. It's really dependent on what the teacher's, teacher preference, what the student needs. You know, this is really about kids. What do they need? For some kids, being inside the classroom to get, to gain the instruction they need is not the best place for them. We had a meeting today and talked about some kids who just, when you get them out of the classroom and they're not dealing with so much of the stress around them and the distractions, how they tend to be making the progress you'd like to be able to see. It's not, there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach to this. And we, being the expert teachers that we are, usually know what that best approach is, and it's through collaborating with others that we make that determination.
I just wondered, it's also, some of the programs we use, like REE180, are not conducive to using in the classroom. So we have, you'll see a slide on all the different programs that we use that the school has invested hundreds and hundreds of dollars in. Those programs are best used when you do a pull-out situation. It doesn't mean that if that's not what's best for the student, we're going to do that. If what's best for the student is to have us in the classroom, then by all means, that's where we'll be. We'll show you the programs in just a minute.
There is a guide. I, being a reading specialist, I have contacted a lot of people. And when this proposal was made, I started doing some research. And I've been researching this, and Joyce has been researching this since this proposal was made. And I've been on the Board of the Vermont Council on Reading for 20 years. And I started contacting some of the educators and the people throughout the state who have, who I know through that organization. And I was introduced to this multi-tiered system supports response to intervention and instruction. It is something that I'm going to, it's, the Vermont Reeds Institute and the Vermont Department of Education are the main collaborators behind this document. It's sizable. It's worth reading. I've read it from cover to cover a few times over the break. And I'm just going to pull my copy out and I'm going to give you two points to that. I think are very important. First, being that the steering committee, I'd like, if people, please feel free to come and look. We'll leave this stuff up on the table. Please look at the steering committee that has developed this document. March Libsyn from UVM, Pat Galant, Project Coordinator, Vermont Reeves Institute. There's an impressive list of educators and superintendents and people in charge of curriculum throughout the state on this document, who created this document. And one of their main points is that if...
Also including people from CSSU, as you can see on the PowerPoint. Megan Roy and Molly McLaughlin are all in the steering committees of this document.
Many of the points that they make from there, point to expert teaching and careful attention to student progress are being key features to this. Provided by knowledgeable and expert teachers. Instruction and interventions are increasingly differentiated, tailored, and targeted in a tiered system designed to accelerate the learning. We talked about the acceleration of the learning being so important. Research, and there's research and research and research out there. And we had a box of the research that we have found over the last couple of weeks that says that expertise matters. In fact, the expertise of teacher has been distinguished as the most important factor in improving students' learning. Excellent instruction provided by an expert teacher and effective school leadership are the keys to school improvement and the success of the multi-tiered system of RTI. RTI, Response to Intervention and Instruction. Research suggests that the students of expert teachers learn more and that expert teachers make more sophisticated, integrated judgments about students' performance, so teachers can teach with more fluency, automaticity, and efficiency than a novice. It talks about the people who are providing the instruction need to be experienced, and we are. And one point that was in your letter, students receive intervention experience classroom instruction as, students receiving intervention experience classroom instruction as their main instructional program. Intervention supplements classroom instruction, becomes increasingly intensive, and is delivered by the most expert teachers. To take somebody who isn't experienced as, I mean, I just, to take the teachers that are here and to say that you want to replace us with somebody who is a paraprofessional, a para-specialist, there are wonderful paraprofessionals out there. There are wonderful para-specialists out there. But you cannot get the kind of experience that you have between those of us who are currently teaching this program. And again, there are other research. CSSU guiding principles. Intervention specialized instruction is provided by the most qualified professionals for given content areas. Evidence-based instruction. Instruction and intervention is provided in small groups by expert teachers. This intervention, this is what we do. We're interventionists. We provide this instruction for those students who need extra. These are the programs. When I moved down to the third through fifth grade level and I was working with a middle school, it was very different working in the middle school than it is in third through fifth grade. And you're trying to reach an instruct, reach a population that's quite young. And you want to try and get that population to a place of independence, quite young. So it's important to be able to give them, to have a, have a toolbox of things to be able to provide for them. And, you know, we have worked hard to develop assessments and to find programs that would address any possible need that a student would have. And there are many. They're complex. They are diverse. And we, and we work together towards addressing those and getting those kids to a place. And we have lots of data to support what we've been able to do with kids. In a two and a three-year time, a student who was below grade level and getting them to grade level, one year, two years. We have the data to show these programs. And we only have 15 minutes, so we can't show you all of them, but we will give you a snapshot before our time is up. Thank you.
The other part about these programs is the training that it takes, the amount of hours and the training and the money that goes into training teachers to teach these programs. And we've already had all that training. We've all been taught to bring in brand-new people who have, may not have any experience with these, is really disheartening to us.
I did contact the REE180 folks and ask them, because that's a program I started using two, two or three years ago here. And it took a lot to learn that program and to get trained. And I, I think of myself as a pretty, there's always something to learn with that program, but I think of myself as being pretty literate with it and pretty confident. And I've been speaking to them through this process also. And when I got in touch with them, they said they had not heard of people who were not expert teachers teaching using that program, is what I, I have an email from somebody just today. So these are some things to consider for you all as you're making your decision. The current Essential Skills teachers do have seniority over the newly hired teachers. We do have the right to replace teachers' jobs as outlined in the contract. This is affecting our school climate. The school climate and the environment will be greatly impacted if para-specialists are hired at a greater rate of pay than the paraprofessionals who currently are here serving our school. I think that speaks for itself. The neediest population of students may be served by newly hired para-specialists instead of expert teachers who have taught here for many years. There's a lot to be said for our community and who these kids are and that we know them. And we've been watching them going through the ranks. When the question was asked, is there data to support the proposed changes in the delivery of the instruction of the current Essential Skills program? The answer has been no. There is no data. Data-based research confirms that the neediest students should be taught by the most expert teachers in this job of reference. It'll take years for para-specialists to be trained for this job at a level of the current Essential Skills teachers. This will be an additional cost to the school for this training. And research shows that early intervention improves the outcome for struggling readers. And these are just questions for you to consider as you're going through. And, you know, how will para-specialists be delivering the reading, writing, and math to three classrooms in one grade? What will that look like?
Thank you. Thank you both for your thoughtful consideration and presentation. The time that you put in is very helpful in informing us.
Have we finished our 15 minutes already?
I think you have. So, and, and we have the materials, which very much help us to be able to look through them as we're considering this and discussing this tonight. Does anyone have any questions for them while they still have the material? Go, please, go ahead.
So, thank you. This is really helpful. I'm just curious, and I'm sorry if you said this somewhere and I didn't catch it, but can you give me a sense of our student population, the number, the overall number for all of the para-educative, Essential Skills teachers? How many students are served through the current system?
We are only speaking through third through eighth grade, and we have, it's in, I think it was in the letter that was sent out, there are currently 95 students...
95 students.
...in grades three through eight. That does not include those in the K2 population.
Okay. Do we know across our whole school, how many? I'm looking at our administration right now. Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And as we said earlier, we didn't, we have lots of data. We brought a lot of data with us. So if, if later, if you want to see that data, please feel free. It's all here for you to see the growth of students. It's really important. Also, we encourage you to visit our classroom. Our classroom will be gone if this program is gone. Some kids who have a difficult time focusing in the classroom, who may have ADHD or have problems with over-stimulation in a classroom, need a place to go. And that's what our classroom is, and it's all set up. It's like a math lab and a reading lab. We have computers. It's a computer lab, too. That'll be gone if, if we are replaced. Thank you for listening to us, and I know we've taken up enough of your time.
Before moving on to discussion matters, is there anyone else for audience and communication at this time? Hearing none. We'll move on to 4.0, discussion matters, into our 4.1 budget work session. First on the agenda is 4.1.1, association input regarding contemplated reductions. Is there anyone here who is going to speak on behalf of the association? I do not see or hear anyone, so we will move on to 4.1.2, decision packets final. Is that Mr. O'Hara?
So the last time that we met, I presented some decision packets, and we're looking, okay, we're looking like we're around 3%. And due to, due to CSSU assessments and some other numbers that came in, that number now stands at 5.2% budget to budget. We found out this information last weekend, so about nine days ago. And we knew that, we thought that we had looked under every rock and turned over every stone. You've all heard the spiel, but I felt like I'd be doing a disservice to you if I didn't at least present some additional, additional areas that you could look to for, for reductions, given the, the state that 5.2% would, the tax implications would be 10, 10.7, is that right, Bob? The tax implications on a 5% budget increase would be 10.
Makes sense.
I think that's what you had. I said that before the next school break. So I'm going to go through all of this information and, so probably the numbers aren't going to make sense to you now, I'm going to go through the tiers, but you can bear with me before you jump to the tiers. I have a couple of extras, but it's all going to be up here as well. Actually, I have one extra for the people in the corner here. This, this chart is the, the chart that I want to...
Can I?
Yeah.
The 10%, that's, that includes the $186,000 of decision packages, is that correct? The 10% tax implication?
The 10% would be everything.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So I want to, I want to highlight this, this chart to begin with. A question came up during our last budget meeting. What, how much has the school grown since we closed our doors last school year? And if you look here at June 2013, this is where we closed our doors last year. We had 498 students. From that time till today, we now have 532 students. And, you know, doing the quick math, that's an extra 34 students that came into our doors from the time that we ended school last year to the time that we ended now. And, and it's, it's substantial. And if you look back from September 2001 till now, we're up 55 kids, which is also substantial. So I guess the reason why I think that this is so important is we are trending up. We can look, when, when we get to the other pages in this document, we can look to take the conservative approach. Let's hope that no more, you know, the approach of let's hope that we don't continue to grow at this rate. My approach would be to say it's better to be safe than to be in a situation where we're looking back saying we don't have enough support. I'm going to bring your attention to this chart. This chart is taking you back to 2009, 2010. And how many classroom teachers, UA teachers, guidance counselors, essential skills, special educators, nurse coordinators, TLL, SLP? We have 48.5 FTEs. We've dropped down the last school year, or this, this current school year, I'm sorry. This, I'm sorry, this should say 2013, 2014. This is this school year. So if you could make that up. We've dropped down to 46.95, which doesn't seem like a huge decrease. Para-educators went from 18.45 to 14.58 this year. I, I created another category that's called other, and I put the library assistant, the behavior specialist, the custodial staff, the kitchen staff, the SAP, the front office staff, the mentor coordinator, and another colleague. And that also doesn't look like it's a huge decrease. It went from 17.79 down to 16.25. Special ed, for the administration, we've gone down from 2.0 to 1.8. Special ed administration has stayed the same. All of those look like very slight decreases. The big, the big piece of this is the school population has gone up almost 60 students in that time. So we have more students with less support. This isn't a surprise to anybody. We know that we've been cutting throughout, but the level, this chart, when I took a look at it, was really surprising to me, is we continue to try to do more with less. I'm going to bring you to the budget tiers. From last budget meeting, we had the FCS program. I'm putting this into Tier One. We had a .4 math coordinator position at 22,000. Upon further review, there was a mistake on my part. It should have been 33,000. So we're gaining an additional 11,000 from the original decision package. Sorry for that confusion. Tier Two reductions, you're going to see classroom teacher here, you're going to see one para-interventionist here. There was a change that I made earlier today after I had already printed off the packets. Either way, when we get into the Tier Two and Tier Three, these are things that are definitely going to have an impact on the students. Joyce and Catherine mentioned that, the climate, the culture of the school. The, the decision packets that I presented last time is what I thought the school could get by with. I think any cuts from this point forward are going to have an impact. These are the cuts that I think that we can, we can figure out a way to minimize the impact on, on the students. So from our, from the instructional redesign, there were seven para-interventionists. Uh, so from our, from the instructional redesign, there were seven parent interventionists, uh, that would take, um, that would be part of the redesign here. Uh, this would say that we could try to do with six. Reduce the supply equipment and, uh, book budget lines by sixty thousand. This was a surprising one to me, I'm not gonna lie. Last year, when you went through the, the supply line, Bob took you on an exercise where you had page after page. I'm gonna admit that because of that process, I didn't take a very close look at this in my initial stage. However, our math coordinator came to us and, and said that she thought that she might be able to buy the books that are scheduled to be bought next year in this current year with the money, and because some of the books were paid for with grant funds. So then I began to look at, what is it that we're going to need next year? What is it that we can buy this year to, to offset those costs? And I feel pretty comfortable that we can cut sixty thousand dollars in the, the supply, the equipment, and the book budget lines in order to make that happen. I would, I would much rather go there than people, obviously. Uh, Paul can speak to this, and, uh, there's Melody is here from program council. Program council is undertaking a way to take a look at the supply lines, how they've been allocated in the past, and maybe a more efficient way of doing it in the future. Uh, right now, without getting too much into it, right now, every classroom teacher is given a, a budget line, they have to stay within that, uh, within that budget. Alager and I approve everything that comes forward, uh, but I feel like there may be a more efficient way to run that, uh, model. So, I won't speak anymore of that. Uh, in order to get the budget down to, um, back down to a three percent, it would mean an additional, I, I should have started here, it would mean an additional one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars to take the budget from a five point two that apparently is down to a three percent. Three percent I'm using kind of as a, that was the number I was shooting for in the beginning. I'm not sure of the feeling of the board, but in order to get there from the original decision packets that I set forth, it would be an additional one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. In order to do that, sixty thousand dollars in the supply line's not gonna do that. The additionally eleven thousand dollars that I found in the, the math coordinator isn't gonna do that. So the things that I put forward in the decision packet originally of the two classroom teachers, we would have to try to have larger class sizes and, and only have one next year. And I'll show you what the impact would be going to that model. Uh, also, I, I do believe that we're in need of uh, an additional student support person. We're at five thirty-two now. If we get another classroom size of seventy coming in, we're gonna be upwards of five hundred and fifty at least next year with one guidance counselor. But I wanted to present, I wanted to present information to you that would allow you to make some either decisions or come back to me with suggestions or questions. If we're gonna add any positions next year, this is what our class sizes would look like. Uh, I'm, I'm putting sixty-three in for kindergarten. I believe that is a very conservative number. It's not gonna surprise me at all if our class size isn't seventy then. If it's sixty-three, we have class sizes of twenty-one. And first grade class sizes of almost nineteen, and so on and so forth. Second grade seventeen, third grade twenty, fourth grade twenty-one, fifth grade twenty-one, sixth grade twenty-seven and a half, seventh and eighth grade twenty-six. If we added, uh, one position next year, it would bump the sixth grade down to eighteen point three three per. If we added two positions next year, it would drop the kindergarten down to, to a reasonable number. This is assuming that starting today until next September, our numbers stay the same. That's a big assumption to make. The instructional program redesign, three point four teacher FTEs. The addition would be a point two title one teacher at the K-two level. Seven parent interventionists would be six with the tier three, uh, reduction or tier two reduction up above. The piece that I, I do wanna mention is that, um, since this is a new program, we are able to use the Medicaid funds to help offset the costs. So this entire instructional program redesign is a cost neutral. Would that, would that Medicaid, um, fund coverage? This entire piece is cost neutral. So the, uh, the reduction of three point four teacher FTEs, the addition of a point two title one teacher and seven parent interventionists, with the offset of the thirty-eight thousand dollars with Medicaid as a cost neutral.
It means net education spending is neutral. If you add in the revenue that he's, uh, drawing down and offset the expenses that you're gonna have in your warned budget, when you get to do net education spending, it's neutral. On the warned budget, it shows up as an increase in costs, 'cause that's before revenue.
Thank you. And, and just for complete transparency and clarity, if this went down to six, uh, parent interventionists, then it's, um, Bob could do the numbers. Again, we, we can still use the thirty-eight thousand regardless of what this number is, if that makes sense.
Cost neutral piece, I, the way I understood it from the last meeting was, that's just this year? 'Cause the revenue source is gone next year, is I correct?
I think what, the way that we would answer that is that, uh, the Medicaid funds shouldn't be counted on, but there's history of how much, uh, if we took a look at the three-year history, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, if we took a look at the three-year history, uh, indications would say that we would have some money to continue to cover the cost. Uh, but as we know, and we, we've long ago stopped counting on funds that continue to come in. But if, if the, if the past is any indication, the, uh, part of our literacy coordinator is paid through Medicaid funds, and that's been ongoing for a number of years. We can continue to pay per out of Medicaid because it's already established. Once this new program is established, you can continue to pay it, there's no restrictions there. Uh, if, um, if we all of a sudden decided that we wanted to throw this thirty-eight thousand dollars into, um, covering the essential skills program, we couldn't because it's an already established program, if that makes sense. You can only use it. Yeah, I'm gonna probably mess this up a little bit. You can only use it for new programs and, is there another piece?
You covered, in your journey, you've covered all the relevant aspects. The Medicaid fund has a certain balance on it, has expenditures going on in support of the school, used in revenue in a given year, and has regular receipts each year. What we counseled two of them to do is to make sure they're not overspending, um, and beginning to try and fund, uh, activities within the school with Medicaid money that they don't necessarily have the money there the year they want it to do. The second thing is that it's generally not a good thing to put stuff in Medicaid that is the essential core part of what the school does, because it might not be there two years, three years, or four years out. And then lastly, you can't fund Medicaid stuff and supplant activities that are already in the school. So you can't look at Medicaid to kinda cover a shortfall in the general operating expense for classroom teachers in any given year. That's a, that's, that's not accepted by the federal government. So those are the three things happening in that area.
Yeah, the one, the one, the one piece that I do wanna mention is that, um, we aren't, we aren't looking to replace Joyce and Catherine. Joyce and Catherine, um, as they mentioned, they, they do have bumping rights, and their expertise would be, um, very much appreciated back in, in the classrooms. This is completely, um, a structural redesign of the program. With the increased number of students that we're serving, um, the number of tier two students is also going up. Would we like to hire five additional classroom teachers to offer the tier two support? Absolutely. Given the situation and, and knowing that we have to have more people to serve more student needs, this is, this is a way to get it done. This would be a push-in model where the seven parent specialists would be able to go into someone's classroom like Paul's, where he could sit and work with the, the students that needed that extra support, while the other person definitely helped out with everybody else. It's a more fluid, uh, movement of, um, providing that tier two instruction. But I, I don't, I can answer any questions on any of this. But I didn't want you to think that we're trying to replace classroom teachers with seven parent interventionists.
This, this is hard to bring clarity to exactly what our decisions are because the, the budget issues obviously are very interconnected to staffing issues. As boards, we try to stay away from staffing redesign issues, you know, we, you know, we don't wanna touch it with a ten-foot pole, 'cause once you get board members in the middle of staffing redesign, you wanna get rid of them as soon as they're there. So for us as board members, some of this is gonna be really challenging about, how we understand needs in the school and how we relate that to the community. So put the staffing aside for a minute. Just looking at the budget numbers, part of what we've said as a board is that we think that there's a price point that the community can support, and that if we go above a certain price point, we're gonna get a lot of kickback and we may have a defeated budget, and then it's, you know, one step forward, three steps back. And what we have said is that our comfort level, I don't know if we've, I'm not sure how, how much we've clarified it, but I think that we are hovering around like a three percent budget year to year. And part of that is driven by the rhetoric at the state level, as well as moving from, um, having a, an annual meeting within the auditorium or in, within the gym where we can have a conversation to moving to Australian Ballet. This is our first time at Australian Ballet, so we get, um, you know, limited attention from the community about what's going on in the school. So that's part of our rationale for trying to be conservative about getting a budget that we wanna have passed. We all want the same thing. We all want great teachers working with the kids, and we all believe that we have an unbelievable staff here in our building. I'm looking at our financial management report in November, and we're, the forecast at that point, and it may be different now, was a forty thousand dollar deficit, you know, running behind. So we're already behind. So we can't, we don't have extra pennies to be spending on this year, because somehow we've gotta make up that forty thousand before the end of the year. Our, um, our cash carryover from year to year is in a position where we can't draw down on that next year. We won't be able to, it would be foolish of us to even suggest it. We know that because that's at a place where we need to start building that up again. So we're, you know, conservatively in a very tight budget spot, and the recommendations for how that money is spent, I think we're all ears to that, but I, I'm speaking for myself, and I don't know if other board members wanna speak to this issue, but I'm very concerned about us being able to pass a budget that's, um, more, a lot, you know, going above that three percent year to year. We're gonna have to do a lot of PR with that. And, and I'm hearing this from other board members, and you know, I see board members from Burlington, and they're in a tight spot too, and, and we're, all board members all over the state are getting pushed back right now. So I'm just expressing my concern.
And I hope that I, I, um, I want to acknowledge that when I started the process, I, I also, three percent was at the top of where I wanted to go. So I don't want you to, um, that, that initial, uh, set of decision packets that I put forth, I thought that that would allow us, you know, the one, the one amazing thing is that we're growing. And, you know, those large numbers, they're fantastic, but before that that impacts our budget positively in some ways, it's two years realized, you know, it takes two years for those numbers to really count, to really have an impact. So in the meantime, it, it puts a little bit of a strain on us, but it's, it's also exciting. So, you know, I think the things that I put up here, um, I worry, uh, I worry about large class sizes and the effect that it has on teachers and staff morale and, and things like that, but, um, we have amazing staff. I mean, it's not just classroom teachers, but we have an amazing staff here that's answered the bell before. So, you know, I, I wanna advocate for, for smaller class sizes, but I also understand the community side. And I, I think you're in a tough spot, I'm in a tough spot, there's, there's no real easy answer, but I didn't want you to come away thinking that I kinda was oblivious to the, to what's out there in the community.
Kind of run through that scenario, you know, the, the journey that we've been taking.
Yeah.
What Colin's saying, right? I couldn't agree with her more wholeheartedly, um, regarding where I think we need to comment at the budget. And I think the challenge we face when we go through these decisions every year, was on the board, the previous years, what I said, as a budget buddy, is it, it just seemed like you're keep trying to cut the exact same piece of pie thinner and thinner and thinner. And I just sat here and, and thought, maybe we have to start thinking about different things and something, and no one's gonna wanna discuss this, but we had to go back to a half-day kindergarten. Might that be a solution? To have an afternoon and a morning session? That would have dramatic impact on budget now. You'll leave the professionals here to talk about the, the learning component, but, you know, I know we had that battle to get it to full day, and then that won't be regressive, a lot of ways to go back, but, I mean, I think we're at, don't let me minimize with you folks how important I think that is. I think it's, it's very important. We're at a critical juncture here with, I mean, you listen to the radio, the state's talking about the educational funding, the, the big deficit at the state level. It's not gonna get any easier. So I just encourage this, this, the administration, the teachers, the board, the budget body, the community, to think about what things are we willing to tolerate, because we wanna make the cuts here. We don't want the cuts to happen via, after budgets have failed, community and the forced cuts. So those are my thoughts.
I could add a comment that the numbers that Jeff's shown is, the school population has grown by six percent in one year. And kindergarten apartments aren't full yet. Uh, we just saw the article in paper last week, they're talking about bringing in two hundred and forty-five additional housing units. The way it's been going, that's gonna be a hundred-plus students. And you're right, that, I mean, things are gonna get, you can't live, you can't have a constant budget if your school population is increasing by six percent a year, right? Yeah, even though we fall behind by two years because of the frigging state rules, fact of the matter is there's six percent more kids. And it's a full classroom worth of kids that came in this one year.
The increase is great, but there's learned to, Luke, if you keep increasing every year, you never get that, you never get to catch up with the revenue, you know, and that's a challenge we're facing.
Maybe I'm just too much of a glass, you know, half-full type of guy, but I mean, I, that's the piece that's exciting to me.
It's much better than the other way. Don't get me wrong. I mean, it's much, I'd much rather be having the upward trend, but still, we just, we feel like, I just sit here feeling like, all right, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to catch up because the revenue follows two years and those seventy-two more kids, it's great. My kid's one of those seventy-two. What are yours? You know, it's,
Seventy-five now.
Well, there you go, seventy-five. So, so it's a, you know, it's all positive, but it's just
Seventy-six, sorry. We got them yesterday.
Bob's Hotel, right?
But I mean, and we joke about it, but since the new year, I think we've had five kids come in. We love kids. And, and it speaks loudly to the, to the job that the teachers and the staff are doing here. I mean, it really does. People are moving to Heinsberg. It's great. But it's going to present us some challenges. If I were to go back to the tiers, the decision for me to move the classroom teacher over here out of the Tier Two came at twelve o'clock today. Again, all of these have an impact. The, the reducing the supply line, I can do that. That, that one, that one shouldn't require too much discussion. I, I feel like through careful consideration and looking at what we could cut back on that we spent this year, I, I think, I think this one is okay. The middle-level support, again, I feel like it's something that's needed. The way that, the way it's structured right now is that I, myself and Allegra are the, the other people that are involved in that process. So when somebody needs someone to talk to and, and Mr. Rass and Kate Meyer are, are busy, they, they come to Allegra and myself. It's not allowing us to be as effective or as available as, as we would like. But again, that's something that we can cover. It's not ideal, you know, in times we all have to, we all have to give and take. The classroom teacher, I, I really believe that smaller class sizes are going to lead us to have that continued support from, I mean, continued growth with the kids, obviously, but you know, we, we want to continue this, this positive feeling that, that people must be having about Heinsberg to, to continue to see these numbers go up. And yeah, I do realize that it's just, it's part of it is just the economic growth and, and Heinsberg being great, but I'd like to think a little bit of it as the school. Lisa?
Since September of two thousand twelve, we added forty-six kids to the school. That is
I'm going to take you back to June two thousand thirteen with a four ninety-eight. September two thousand thirteen, so all of the classes had moved in, that large kindergarten had moved in. From, from that point to now, it's twelve kids. Does that, do you see the difference there?
I don't know why we closed the doors at four ninety-eight and we opened at five twenty and you didn't add in that twen- that twenty-two.
A huge kindergarten class came in, in September. So that was, I believe last year's kindergarten was fifty-one, so we added about twenty-five kids. And well, I mean, what you would really do is you would look at this eighth grade number here.
Yeah, just look at the total number.
If you look at the total, Jeff, why isn't it the fact that if we opened the doors in September two thousand twelve with four eighty-four and in January of two thousand fourteen, we have five thirty, that we, that is an addition of forty-six kids to this school?
I'm seeing September two thousand twelve or thirteen.
So that's almost ten percent increase to the school population.
I have the same question as Dave. Can you say that again? Show me where I'm looking.
So go to your totals, look at, a year ago, not, not this, not when we opened the door this year, but when we opened the door in two thousand twelve, we had four hundred eighty-four kids.
Yes.
So September two thousand twelve.
Forty-eight kids.
And in January of two thousand fourteen, a year and a half later, we're at five thirty. That's an addition of forty-six kids to this school.
Gotcha. On the sheet, and I updated this today and there was two more, so I, I, I see now my confusion. So four eighty-four and that, now the new total is five thirty-two. So yes, we, we increased forty-eight kids in that time.
What about those five floaters down at the bottom though? Are those not included in the other numbers? Should we be?
That's probably a good assumption. Sue Hunter did this for us. Numbers include two part-time homeschool students, so yes, you're right that the homeschool students weren't part of our school last year and three off-campus students, they were. They have been part of our school for a number of years.
The point is though, you'd have to back out those five students from the forty-eight because they're not in school. Right? That's what she's saying. She's interested in those.
Sure, apples to apples, we didn't have the floaters.
You could take, you could take three off of this number to make it, I'm sorry, you could take two off of this number to make it, I'm sorry, take two off of this number to make it five thirty. Right. So that's, that's the only difference. The three students, the three students that have been off-campus have been, have been Heinsberg Community School students ever since I've been here.
But they're not in the school.
No, they're still part of our ADM though.
But they're part of this number. They're, they're part of all these numbers. The only, the only, the only number that you would subtract is two off of that, five thirty-two.
So I guess the reason I'm asking about the numbers in this is because I never really follow this, but when do we see the benefit of, in our revenue from the addition of forty-six students? When does that, when do we start seeing that?
The year after and the second year after.
The year, so
It's a two-year backward average to calculate equalized pupils for the state formula. So the kid shows up today, he's counted next year in your equalized pupil count in the final year.
Getting off the school board too, too early, Lisa. We're having so much money.
You're going to have so much more fun, that's for sure. Really.
I'll just report him to the law. I didn't make that stuff up.
Coming to grow, you never catch up.
You have a question as well?
I do, and I apologize if this is sort of stupid, but I'm good for the dumb questions.
So you got the fourteen kids coming in last year during the school year.
This year, yep.
Twelve coming in so far this year.
Oh, I, yep, I'm with you.
But the overall change is forty-six, plus or minus the two that we counted, don't count, who cares?
Yep.
And then you're left with twenty that came here during the summer.
Difference between eighth grade class and the kindergarten class.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what it is.
Okay.
The outgoing eighth grade class and the incoming K and the, the delta between the two of them. So this was fifty-one outgoing eighth graders, seventy-six incoming. That was seventy-three we gave to.
It just seems, if you just do quick math, it seems like the change during the school year seems to be at the younger grades. So like twenty-two to twenty-five for this year, September, we started with twenty-two kinder- or triple E, we're now at twenty-five. Kindergarten, we started seventy-three, we're now at seventy-seven. It seems like these younger grades are where we see a lot of movement, at least from your statistics, during the school year, not so much in the older grades. The older grades are nothing to plus one, minus one. It just seems like, I'm concerned about classroom size. I'm also very concerned about the community and the budget, especially in light of what happened last year. I don't have the answer, but I just feel like not having that extra kindergarten teacher is a mistake. And that's just my two cents.
Father of a kindergarten. I mean, I know, I'm just looking at it, I'm looking at it, your, your numbers you're saying are conservative. Sixty, sixty-three, so yeah, that's conservative. The class has twenty-one kids already at kindergarten level.
Even plan a five-one kindergarten for this chart.
Yeah, it's, and that's when we want to hit them.
At the same time, I also feel like five percent, even three percent, I feel like the community is going to freak out three percent. That's just my gut, we're talking about.
I'm going to say something else. You know, I just wanted to, and I, I am apologizing for not being better articulated up here. One eighty-one is the number to get you down to three percent. And if you have thirty, fifty-one, one eleven, one forty-one, you have two twenty-six up there in the tiers. I, but I hear you. That would take you down to about a two-point-seven. And then, but then I would need some direction from the board about where, where and what, and you know, if you'd like me to run different numbers or if there's different thoughts out there.
You, you need to give the board of us a signal on what you want to have presented and approved on Wednesday. So it's pretty, pretty important that you give us enough language so we know how to craft the warning, the articles and the relevant documents for approval.
And just to be clear, if we only do Tier One, we'll have a five percent?
A little bit over a five percent, it'd probably be about a five-point-one percent.
If you followed the whole column down?
If you, if we didn't have a family consumer science program and a point-four math coordinator, if we only did that, it would be a five-point-one budget to budget.
A clarification, that does include, at Tier One, it includes two teachers.
Two additional teachers, correct.
Just want to make sure that that's clear.
And if we do Tier One and Tier Two, where does that put us?
And this is, this is where I like, I'm actually going to change it right now. So we're talking about the same thing that you have on your
Oh, we have as what now?
Uh, no, and that's why I'm doing this right now. This was something I shouldn't have done.
If this is a decision package, I, I kind of need to see what's the total FTE reduction or addition in the total cost? Elaine just said there are two, two teachers in the Tier One reduction. I'm not seeing two-point-oh FTE reduction.
No, addition.
So, so Cal, can I, can I try to help?
I need a spreadsheet.
Do you have that page?
I have a sheet that may help. The word you and I went back and forth this weekend on or no?
Yeah.
It's, it's clear.
Yep. And you know, truth be told, I thought that you were going to present your sheets, so I can, so that was just miscommunication on my part with you.
Okay.
Yeah. No, so I, so do you want me to, I can put it underneath the, the dock lamp?
Just assume he handed it out and
Oh, to do a half of it all?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought you were going to go first. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. I guess we should talk a little more.
Everyone's busy, we understand.
Yeah.
Is there the reduced supply in equipment you have down as a Tier Two reduction? And it might be a good point, but could that be a Tier One reduction and something out of Tier One be moved into a Tier Two reduction?
That's, oh. The, the initial where I was going to jump to is absolutely that could be a Tier One. The reason why I didn't put it in the Tier One was because these were already presented to the board, the FCS and the point-four math. That's why I presented it that way. I, I think what Tina's asking is, is could we swap the, reduce supply equipment budget lines into Tier One and pull something out of Tier One and put it into a Tier Two possibly? At this point, anything is possible. This would be my recommendations.
Jeff, when you do the decision packet here, the FCS program is forty-five thousand, not forty?
Uh, all of these numbers are at the conservative level, so that not, uh,
And the behavior specialist for middle schools at forty-five thousand in the decision packet?
From last time?
Yeah, that, I mean, I, I'm not trying to hide anything. I thought, yeah, but that's, that's great that you pointed out. I'm trying to think, it seems like I would have gotten the numbers from the decision packet, so I'm not sure why. And I can't, I mean, I did this a week ago.
I, I feel like I need to seize that thing I was saying earlier. Several years ago, we had this Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three approach to what at the time was budget cuts or reductions. What we're being asked to do is we're being asked to present a budget number. You're telling us what you will do with that amount of money. But, so we're understanding that these are your classifications of what you would do with various amounts of money. We are not necessarily approving or disapproving specifically of how you spend that money. So hypothetically, if we passed a budget of, just for a round number, nine million dollars, you could spend it this way, you could spend it a different way. Correct?
I think we have to approve the additional teachers.
I'm working
We have to approve, we have to approve the hiring of teachers, that's correct.
And once you approve the hiring of teachers, if you couldn't hire extra personnel without coming to you and getting a PAF form that kind of assigned a little box and a number that said, yes, you have authority to do that. Otherwise, the budget is the budget. I mean, the board doesn't micromanage what happens within the lines of the budget.
So, so I guess one of, what I'm, what I'm really seeking clarity on is whether one's in a, whether a particular item that we're talking about is in one column or the other, in some respects, doesn't matter. If people are hearing clearly that if the sixty thousand dollars can be cut easily, then we would expect that to be cut easily.
Well, there's also the piece of notification in the association, right? For potential rip. Any potential rip, right?
Which I think we do.
That's how.
Yeah.
I just want to know, based upon the different tiers, if we make the cuts, recommend all the tiers, regardless of what tier, what budget increases it put us at?
Well, if I understood correctly, if you go to Tier Three, it's a three percent, right, Jeff? I guess it's a
Two-point-seven.
Two-point-seven, and then Tier One would be five-point-one, and then obviously Tier Two is somewhere in between, right?
Correct.
And it's really two decisions, right? There's, what's the budget number you want? And then the, the board needs to decide on that, on the instructional program change, because that has I mean, it really does, it's a two-pack.
I'm going to take you backwards to go forwards because a lot has occurred since the last time you met. So the first package you have on your, in your hands just gets you to the common point this conversation should begin at. The first page is the change sheet that's on the desk of all three of us. It captures decisions made impacting Heinsberg's budget that are already behind you. It starts with the ELP projection covering costs of anticipated new kids within the Early Learning Partnership Program. It then reflects the reduction in health insurance. That should ring a bell. We were, we were talking in, in, uh, in December, I don't know if it had yet been finalized, that is a final number, a reduction to the budget. And then there's a long list of CSSU assessments reflecting both the decisions the CSU board, CSSU board made on December nineteenth relative to their budget. And slight changes in all the costs at CSSU as they're reallocated based on final enrollment numbers published by the state. Because CSSU assesss the perponderance of its costs based on the relative side of enroll, size of enrollment of each of the schools. So this is before any sort of decision packet begins, conversation begins. You're at an adjusted baseline of eight, eight, oh, three, five, two, six, with So it's an adjusted baseline, but for all intents and purposes, this eight-eight-oh-three number is to offer next year what we're offering right now. Correct? Correct. Correct. Well, correct with CSSU finalized. Yes. CSSU made three changes that are necessarily in that model. Okay? Okay?
Program to program.
Program to program, identical.
Eight point two.
So if you're quickly thumbing through all the sheets, eight eight oh three reflects a two point nine five percent budget increase on the expenditure side. The revenue page is next. We finalized the revenue page with the exception of your use of Medicaid funds. You see Medicaid thirty-nine, six one nine towards the bottom of your revenue column for two thousand fifteen. Remarkably, it's the same as last year. Mike and I and Allegra and Jeff need to sit down once it's clear what we're going to use out of Medicaid and readjust that number, so it doesn't reflect that change. But your revenue looks like right now to be in the neighborhood of one one seven four six one zero for the next budget year. We put those in that tax rate calculator page in the next page to get to a two point nine five percent budget increase ties to an eight point two four percent tax rate increase.
You don't mean eight, ten each, you mean eight point two four?
Eight point two four percent year to year. It's more like six, seven, eight cents.
Can I ask a question on the spending?
You sure can.
Now, one point three percent, is that based on five hundred and five? And would that not be higher now that we're seeing higher numbers?
The higher numbers are reflected there. That's what the five oh five is. It's up thirty-five from last year. Okay. But given the two-year lag in counting, you all know around the table that the group who's sitting here next year has the benefit of that's going to continue for another year or two years at least, which is a good thing to have in your quiver. Okay, does this body of stuff make sense? Questions on this before I have you set this aside on your desk and then move on to handout two? Sure.
I'm just thinking back to the first meeting with the board. I guess it challenged the both of you to sort of think of creative ways to try to find spots in the budget to keep things where they were and, but yet not compromise necessarily education or classroom size or whatnot. And I guess I'm sitting here trying to rack my brain for ideas, and the only thing that sort of comes to... One of the things that comes to mind is possibly world language. Is that something that's come up as a suggestion for savings?
Yeah. To people that have sat around the table and audience, has your world language come up seemingly as a question year after year? The one idea that we looked at was to have world language primarily in the middle level grades. By focusing world language in the middle level only and reducing the availability of world language for the first through fourth grade or fifth grade, the cost savings would be about twelve, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah, it depends on how far we want to cut the program, or I mean, how far we want to investigate that. Thinking that the six eight would be as far as we'd want to go, the cost savings as it relates to the loss that we would have, I felt like it was worthwhile to keep the program as it was.
I guess, I think we probably all took world language, and probably a lot of us can't speak it today, just guessing. And for me, I'd rather focus the kids on English, math, and focusing on the core, I guess, the force inches. Just my thoughts. I'm definitely not an educator, so.
No, it's... We have two great world language educators, and it's hard, especially without them here, to defend their program, but there's people on both sides of the fence, as you can imagine. There's people that really want that exposure, and then there's other people that are wondering why can't we put the time and energy into something else? And it's, you know, this is one of those things where does the cost outweigh the benefit or vice versa? So it was looked at.
I think it's also important to put on the table with world language in the early grades, that if you were to eliminate world language in the early grades, you would have to find something else to slot in there in order to meet our contractual obligations for providing planning time for teachers. So that is part of the, you know, a way of services that we provide that end up providing the planning time that every teacher needs to have. So it's a little more complicated. It's not that you wouldn't look at it and you wouldn't think, but there's not a money saving there on the face of it. It could be the conversation really would have to be around, would we rather do world language or would we rather do more art or more music or more of this thing or the other? But there's not a budgetary savings on that one. And that ends up complicating it a lot. Once you sit down and you realize you're going to do all of this and... You can't schedule it out. You need to have something else in place.
I was going to let you do your second thing, Joyce. Do you want to... Do you want to do it before or after Bob does the sheet?
Will we have to do the world language?
Sure.
Thanks very much. I'm just wondering, I wasn't here at the earlier board meeting, but if you presented the quality standards for schools and what is required in a school and what is not, and do they understand that world language is not required? So I'm not saying that's what should be cut, I'm just wondering if that's understood.
Yeah, we took a look at the quality standards, and we talked about that, you know, that there's some FCS components that are going to have to be covered by our health teacher. So we did take a look at that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the sheet in front of you has, it's somewhat like deja vu. It's Bob listening to Jeff and Allegra the last weekend, and particularly this last weekend, trying to put what I'm hearing in terms I can understand. So the baseline and change sheet are shown. You all should understand that since we just walked through it. The percentage of the baseline with the change sheet is two point nine five, as I mentioned earlier. I then sorted what he was discussing with me into tier one, tier two, tier three, and then lumped what I had envisioned as part of the decision packets you were asked to consider in December as part of tier one. So I'm going to ask Jeff to help me confirm that my list reconciles with what he wants the list to be. If the first chunk of cost, this decision packets updated slash tier one chunk is in fact just that, the decision packets both, and then what he's described. But I have difficulty...
Yeah.
There's... Well, there's things like the two teachers. The two teachers are in here, the reduction of two teachers, right?
The addition.
Or addition of two teachers, yes.
Yeah, so let's work off of the sheet.
Okay.
Yep.
The... I have forty thousand dollars for family consumer science reduction.
Yes.
Is that correct? Math coordinator reduction of thirty-three thousand?
Yes.
Middle school supporter forty-five?
I can explain the difference. Up on the slide, you saw thirty thousand. We still, regardless of the path that we want to go down, whether it's one person or two people, the person that we currently have in place is a behavior specialist. We want to put into... Oh, I'm sorry. We want to have a position that has a little bit more responsibility, and that would be a bump in pay, which then what you saw up on the screen would be what that person is currently making now. So short answer is just thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, I'll make that adjustment. The next one is seven thirty. I'm using thirty on my sheet from this point forward. The seven pairs I have is a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar add.
Correct.
I have title one, an addition of eighteen thousand.
Correct.
I have a three point four FTE reduction of two hundred and seventy thousand.
Correct.
So if we add all those together, we get a number a little different than I got here, and while you are talking, I'll fix the chart. But that number is, in dollars, is one six five. Okay? So I'll fix the percent up there while you're doing something else. Okay, with all that, everybody good with the first chunk? I've changed FCS.
Family consumer science.
No, I had it as forty, unless you want to change to forty-five.
We could ask Mo, but we're not going to put her on the spot. But let's do forty.
Forty-three ninety-five.
Your original one.
Yes, I... Yeah, so let's stick with forty. Okay?
The last answer I got is always the best one.
And she just answered for us. But it's right in the middle.
Okay. Okay, then I move to tier two. I drew circles around these and moved them around because I thought that's what you were trying to tell me on the earlier chart, but then you moved them back. So I'll leave them the way they are. I have an eighty-five thousand dollar teacher and sixty thousand dollars in supplies. These are both... Yep, good catch. These are both negatives to a negative one forty-five for Bob.
And three point three six is total increase or...
Yes, but it has to be adjusted for the fifteen thousand dollar adjustment I've got up above. Okay? But yes, that is the total budget if you went all the way down through those three changes, or two changes, excuse me.
I'm sorry. And I've only done this for six years, so... But so the tier two, when you say the teacher piece, so is that we're going to add two teachers and then take one out in tier two?
That's what Jeff outlined in his earlier conversation, yes.
And I understand the confusion, because if the decision packet lowered, one of the tiers would be to take one of those teachers away.
This is really confusing.
So the dollar difference, the dollar difference between tier one and tier two is twenty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Right?
If we add...
One sixty-five.
If everything in tier one is going to cost one hundred and sixty-five grand.
Right.
And tier two backs out one hundred and forty-five thousand of that.
Right.
We're talking about twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Wait a minute, are these... Are you telling me those, these are positive numbers?
Top one, tier one, it's a hundred and eighty additional.
Hundred and sixty-five.
Sixty-five, sorry.
There should be parentheses aside.
Allegra Lane is a reduction.
Right.
It's a reduction from that one sixty-five total price tag into...
No, right, take away this one forty-five because they're twenty thousand.
Correct.
So tier two is an addition of the, from the two point nine five to twenty thousand is three point three six.
Everybody semi-okay with tier one and tier two? Tier three, should those be parentheses too?
Yes.
Yep. Thirty, forty, and seventy. That's a seventy thousand dollar total reduction within tier three.
And that gets you to two five four.
Takes fifty grand off the base.
Tell me again what the intervention, interf is. It's a pure...
The behavior intervention.
That baseline.
No, the second way.
Oh, that... Yep, so where are we? In the original decision packet, we had proposed seven. That would be knocking it down to six. In order to run the program as effectively as we'd like, in order to have K nine, so kindergarten through eighth grade support, that would really be nine interventionists if you had one per grade level. When Allegra and I sat down to take a look at where we would need the support, because of the differing grade sizes, we thought that we could do with seven the amount of support that we would need. So it doesn't work out exactly to one per grade level. That's where we initially wanted to go, but we also understood the budget impacts. So we got ourselves down to seven. We could potentially get ourselves down to six.
And then this goes back to kind of Colleen's original question. If, for example, the board... The board... Sorry, can't even ask the question right?
Take your time.
It's around the how we do the early essential... Yeah. So we are making a decision on a budget number. Are we also making that decision? Or you still have the flexibility to?
You could go either way with that, but I'm sure they would like to hear your thinking.
Keith, I'm not sure if it's the right time. There's an audience question.
Sorry, I'm trying to do math.
Is it okay to...
Yeah, let's say that.
Delta fifty plus the delta.
I got fifty minutes. Joe, who has a question?
I just... I'm very concerned about, you know, I know we're powering the budget down and it's predicated on low and there's lots of factors and all that. Is there in the budget consideration a maintenance scheme for the building that is significant? Because I'm watching this week leaks going down through two stories and buckets all over the place. And in trying to, you know, keep everything together, if we don't do some preventative maintenance or fix the small leaks, we're going to have a huge issue, which could lead to a different process. And I'm just wondering if that is part of this process too, if that's being considered, because we do have some issues.
I think the short answer is yes. Yes, we are conscious of those issues and follow them.
That's absolutely right. There's a five-year plan that obviously takes a look at all the major repairs and upkeep that the building needs in order to maintain its structural integrity, and we presented that two budget cycles ago, or two budget meetings ago. It's a good question. I...
Just looking at the numbers, and if you were to go through with this tier one packet, do you take into consideration with your other numbers that the three point four that you would be taking out would be still within the budget and your lower end, the people that would, because of seniority, would be taken out, would probably be lower paid personnel faculty? Is that all in this mix?
Yeah. The... The one thing I'm thinking about. The addition of the two classroom teachers. The sixty-three is the conservative projection. It's very, not very possible. It's possible that it comes in at fifty-five. It's possible that it comes in at seventy-five. And the only reason why I throw that out there is that I think that... Incoming kindergarten class.
Yeah.
But the conservative number that I put out there is sixty-three. So what I'm trying to illuminate is that I think we owe it to the community to give it our best guess. If we projected a kindergarten of three classroom sizes and maybe we realize that there are seventy-five kindergartners, then... But I, you know, I see pulp... may we realize that there are seventy-five kindergartners, then, but I, you know, I see Paul shaking his head. I just wanted to put that out there. That I'm giving a conservative estimate, but it is an estimate at this point.
Well, I see that the numbers have changed. Originally, when we met last met, a two point seven percent budget increase was gonna result in a tax increase upon the order of five percent. If we had a two point seven percent budget increase today, your newer numbers said that the tax rate would go up somewhere between eight and nine percent. That was because some of the numbers seem to have changed from the state. Are they gonna, are they still in flux, data flux?
What this is all based on is the tax commissioners recommended to the legislature, which is just that, it's just a recommendation to begin a conversation in the legislature. So an answer to your question, is it still in flux? It isn't till they leave session. But this is the advice they're being given to begin their conversation as the session begins. The revised numbers on my sheet of paper, if you wanna draw a line through what Bob has on his paper and correct it, is for tier one, the dollar value is eight nine six eight five two six. Eight nine six eight five two six and a four point eight eight percent increase. The tier two dollar number is eight eight two three five two six. Eight eight two three five two six. And the percentage increase is three point one eight. And the last one, tier three, is eight million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand and five hundred and twenty-six dollars. I like that five twenty-six number. Let me play that to them. Two point three six percent increase.
What was tier two again, I'm sorry?
Tier two is eight million, eight twenty-three and five twenty-six.
You really do like that five twenty-six?
Yeah. Lisa, that's Bob's math on the fly with his phone today.
I have a question. It's regarding class sizes.
And I, I have a question. Joyce, I think you've been asking questions, so we know reasons. But it would help for the record if both of the questioners previously and currently could state who they are for the record.
Lisa here. I'm coming back to the class sizes. If you didn't add any more teachers for next year's first grade and next year's fourth grade, how many, like, right now, there's only two fourth grade classrooms. Would that stay there?
So this is, that's a great question. And the reason why I didn't put teachers, like, how many teachers per grade level, because it would confuse people. So the two fourth grade, they're gonna become two fifth grade. And then the three fifth grade are gonna need, I mean, one of the third grade, the third, fifth grade teacher is going to have to be reassigned to a different grade. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So it's, it's what the, the number of students in the class size is, is what we currently have for staffing in the building right now.
Okay, so the three third grades would then move up to three fourth grades.
Correct.
And for kindergarteners would go up to four at first.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think two years ago, you talked about the budget as kind of that perfect storm where there was a lot of things happening with the state and all that kind of stuff. And I'm feeling a little bit like that this time around, only in a different way. Our perfect storm is we have a wonderful opportunity of more students coming into our community. And yet, we're kind of rearranging our teachers and everything to accommodate this without increasing our revenue at the same time. And I, for one, am feeling like there's a lot of change, but not a lot of bang for our buck to make this change. And it's making me feel really uncomfortable because I think this may not be the year to make so much change. And I'm hearing from our administration that we're not supposed to be cherry picking and, you know, kind of telling our administrators what to do with teachers and who to hire and all that kind of stuff. But I think that in terms of the angst of our school, there's change because we're increasing population. And to have so much other stuff happening, new peer educators, teachers, you know, senior teachers being moved around, I'm not real comfortable with that right now. And, um, and even the, and I keep looking at Elaine, and I don't know why I keep looking at you, Elaine. I'm sorry, I'm looking at everybody. This is to everybody, but so I'm just, I'm just saying what I'm feeling. And I'm, I'm still really uncomfortable with the Family Consumer Science program going away. I think that serves a really important need in our school. I think that in terms of twenty-first education, that that has a whole lot of potential for our school. And I do think it serves a population of students in a different way. So, you know, I look at tier one and I go, ugh, I don't like my options here. So I'm just putting it out there. But on, on the flip side of that, you know, I am very sensitive, as you all know, to what our community is paying for education right now. So, but I'm not loving this option. And, you know, I don't, you know, we haven't had a lot of out there, so I put it out there.
What, what I'm hearing is that our administrators need a clear indication from the board tonight what the articles are going to look like on Wednesday night when we reconvene to finally pass a budget to propose to the community. So as uncomfortable as this discussion is, we have to have it right now. And we need to know where all the board members are feeling so that we can give them direction on what number should be on the piece of paper that they show up with on Wednesday night.
I'd like to give our budget buddies an opportunity to each speak. I know that each of them comes to the table with a different perspective and I really value that. And I would really value the opportunity to hear their thinking because I know that they've struggled with this as much as we have.
I'll start. I kinda did a thesis, to be honest. You know, gotta present something that you feel that will be passed, but to do a lot of change in a changing year. And I'm one that really does support the Family Consumer Science. I mean, we're not, we're not talking about necessarily what, what's being taken out, but in order to support what's being taken out, you are making a decision about what's being taken out. Because that's gotta go out to the public.
I'll go next. I'm not gonna chime in on the functions of, well, I really consider it the administrator's responsibility. I don't, I'm not as intimately day-to-day functions of the school to really, I guess, comment on that. So I'm not gonna chime in on that so much. One thing I did wanna add, though, is that, you know, we're talking about whether it's five point oh five or three point oh, three point one eight or whatever the percentage might be. I don't think it's gonna be lost on the taxpayers that the part two is out of that number, which is another one and a half percent. It might get lost on many people, but there's gonna be many that that's not gonna get lost on. And so, you know, I would just keep that in mind. You look at the, at the percentages and what you're shooting for. Well, well, whether it's, we started at two point seven seven and, you know, I think the latest is five point oh five without any of the tier one, two, and three changes.
Oh, I see.
But as you pointed out, I think in the first, one of the first meetings we had, was that tier two was a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that came out of the cost. Well, it's also out of the revenue, but if you're just looking at costs, that accounts for, I don't know, one and a half. Yeah, one and a half or something like that. So, you know, for the taxpayers that look at the change in the, in the, um, in the percentage and they factor that in, they're gonna say, well, it's not really, it's not really a two point five percent, it's really four percent. Because it's an accounting change, really. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, maybe that will, no one will see that, but maybe well.
Well, it's always a challenge because, you know, a quick look, yes, but we're always, we are making accounting changes year to year, but, I mean, that's a big point. Yeah.
I'm really with Lisa and Tina is, one of my personal complaints about schools, schools administrations, the whole, the whole institution is we're not nimble enough. I think change happens at too glacial a pace. I think in the real world, we have to be nimble, we have to turn on a dime. And if Jeff and Allegra feel that the best way to deliver these essential skills is, is seven or six, new peer education, peer educators, if that's what they feel, I'm here to support them in doing that. We have to be nimble. And I looked at the, the numbers in the classrooms, if we only add one teacher, those, those classroom sizes don't make me happy, but they don't, they don't scare me. The kindergarten one's a concern. If we come in at sixty-three, we're good. If not, we'll have to, you know, we'll have to reconvene if we have to and figure it out. And, you know, go, go back to community and, you know, discuss that. I hate to say it, but from my stand, we, I think we gotta come in at tier three or, or around there in our three percent number. That's my feeling.
Tough position, obviously, to be working in a school and also have my, my kids in there and one coming in next year and looking at the class sizes. I think, uh, being a budget buddy for the last three, four years and seeing the journey that this group has gone on and seeing the cuts and everything that's been made throughout the time and knowing that this is the first year that we're going to Australian ballot. You know, I kind of echo a lot of things that, that you were talking about, Bill, that I'm, I'm scared if we go too high first year in Australian ballot, the budget's gonna fail. And at that point, it makes it so we're in a really difficult position, really, really difficult position. We're starting to cut here, there, everywhere, just to try to get a budget passed. I don't know, I, I, it frightens me to even see kindergarten at twenty-one, I will say. You know, I guess part, partly because my son is coming in there, but at the same time, just knowing a kindergarten class and looking at, trying to get kids at that age to be able to do stuff and work with them. I mean, I would much rather see myself with twenty-seven and a half kids, whatever a half kid looks like, as opposed to kindergarten classroom being filled with twenty-one kids. I don't know.
I totally agree with Paul. Everything that you said. I, I feel like first year Australian ballot, I think the town is gonna not be happy, even if the number was the same as last year. I think there's a lot of people in this town that are broke, there's a lot of people losing jobs, there's a lot of people that haven't gotten raises for however many years now. And we're looking at eight percent hike in taxes. We're, we're not gonna continue to have this enrollment problem if we keep hiking taxes the way that we are. Not just from the school budget, but other things in the town as well. I think we have to offer our kids quality education and however you guys advise, I respect as well. But I also feel like we have to be creative and we've gotta figure out a way to get there. Because I don't think, I mean, even this eight percent is, I just don't think it's gonna pass. People don't have any money, they're broke.
I guess I'm the last budget buddy and I kind of wrote a note to myself after the last meeting, trying to sort out what was happening. And one of the conclusions I came to was that I feel that I have to trust the school administration in the form of Jeff and Allegra in terms of making educational decisions that I don't have the expertise to judge on. And I don't know that anybody has a whole lot of expertise in terms of hard research to back up the decisions one way or another. But the people that are working in the school with the students and see what's happening seem like they need, that they are in the position to make the decisions that count. From the financial side of the picture, I'm reading the newspaper reports of Williston, CBU, Shalott, all dealing with school budgets in, in a very similar fashion. Their budgets are going up by relatively small amounts. And yet, because of the things happening at state level, the, the tax rate increase is, is, is crazy. I mean, everybody's looking at between eight and ten percent potential tax increase due to the school budget. And my feeling is that the town meeting, when they consider the rest of Heinzberg's costs, are gonna see the voters ask to pay more money to support the police department and the fire department, the new buildings that are going in, the roads that are beginning to fall apart and are gonna require work. I don't see anything but increases there. And you're right, when you talk about Australian ballot, people are gonna look at that and first year Australian ballot, they're gonna say, oh, now we've got our, we can do our thing. And you're right, Paul, and I think if the budget fails, what do you see every other town's school board doing? Well, how much do we propose the next budget for and what do we cut to get there? And then you're in a position where you don't have a choice. You, you've gotta come up with a dollar number and you gotta figure out how to get there. So I guess I'm not a particularly happy camper at this point in the game, echoing Lisa's pessimism, but it's a, it's a tough decision.
I also feel like a number of the voters in town are not educated about the process, about what goes into the budget. I don't think they have any appreciation for, not everybody, but just a large number. And I think they're just gonna see the percent. And that's gonna be their driving force. They're not gonna know what's behind it or what's, what's making it go, or what's keeping it, what's keeping it at three percent, you know? So I, I think that education of the town has gotta be in the forefront, regardless of the decision.
Could I ask a question? Does the percent increase go on the ballot or is it just a number? You're to approve this eight point nine.
It just has the.
Just a dollar.
Eight million, nine hundred and whatever.
But, I mean, that's, you know, part of, you'll hear me say this over and over and over again. I always advocate for discussing budgets year to year and percent increases versus tax rate increases because depending on the common level of appraisal, that's gonna, the tax rate moves. So I just think it's a more helpful number, number to look at budget to budget. But that's a pretty quick math calculation for a lot of folks. And it'll probably be summarized someplace within our town report, our annual report.
I, I would have to say, because Elaine asked the board to give input on the restructuring, and I would have to say I'm uncertain about that, partly because I'm not, it was good to have the presentation, so like I'm not very knowledgeable about it, which makes me think I should leave it to the administrators because I don't. it to the administrators because I don't, I'm just clearly, I'm not an expert on that. Um, but I do hear Lisa's concerns that is this a year to make such a change, given the stresses we're under? Um, I would advocate for going to tier two. I think we have to add one teacher, given, and I won't say where, but I think we're gonna need another classroom teacher in the school. Um, and, uh, for me, I could, for me saying we have a budget that's goes, is going up by three-point-one-eight percent is defensible when we can also talk about the percent increase in students. That would be my approach. It's not at all fun.
Just to clarify, tier three leaves one additional teacher in the school?
Adds two and then takes one out.
Okay, just to make sure.
Tier two does what?
Adds two, then takes one out.
So it's net one, net one, what's with tier two?
In tier two.
I think our, um, was, you know, there's been a lot of talk about kindergarten and I think our middle school's pretty, uh, pretty stressed numbers-wise. Which is why I'm not suggesting tier three.
Wouldn't you take tier three and take those numbers and move them up to tier two and move your one teacher down to tier three? What I'm saying, like, so still keep two teachers if that's the main concern.
If I'm hearing Kathy correctly, and Kathy, you can tell me if I'm wrong, I think what Kathy is advocating, or possibly is this middle-level support, just stay in. Am I hearing that right, Kathy? Or are you?
I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go even numbers-wise, I don't wanna go that far because, I'm being honest, if our budget gets slowed down, that's how far we're gonna have to go. And so.
But.
I would just go to tier two, which means one new classroom teacher and your reduction in supply for now.
I'm just suggesting, are there other things that you could just, just because you have them in tier one, tier two, tier three, if you, could you move things from tier three to tier two and move the tier two down to tier, you know what I'm saying?
At this point, everything is on the table for the board to see.
Yeah, I think part of what I'm hearing other board members say, and, you know, I would put myself in that same category, is that we hire administrators to make really difficult decisions and work with faculty and staff. And so part of this is us, um, affirming their recommendation, whether or not that's, you know, when the doors open in September twenty-fourteen, might things look a little bit different from what we're talking about today. Likely, yes, because year to year, that typically happens. Things come up during the spring and the summer and, and suggested changes come along. A budget for us, it's a plan, and we're trying to come together with what our best plan is right now. And what I'm hearing Kathy say, and I think I'm in the same boat, I think the, a three-point-one-eight percent budget increase is defensible. I think we can do that, and I would be very reluctant to go below that. And how the school is configured, we're gonna have to continue to learn from our administrators about projected changes, how it's working, and so forth.
Thank you.
It's not fun. It's definitely not fun.
I guess one of the privileges of being the chair is I don't necessarily have to speak if I don't want to, but I think it would be a dereliction of duty as a board member if I didn't at least put some of my thoughts on the record. Not surprisingly, a lot of my thoughts have already been expressed, um, but, uh, because of my day job, I at least have to address some of them. Um, you know, Bill and Larry among others, uh, and I think I've heard Kathy and Colleen say as well, with respect to the staffing, proposed staffing changes, uh, we don't have the expertise our professional administrators do, and what I'm hearing is a recommendation from them that this is the best way to deliver all the program to our kids. So I'm gonna support them on that to the extent that they want to hear that from me and how that affects the dollars that are spent. Um, you know, Kathy and others raised the question, is this the year for this many changes? Bill's response was, we need to be nimble. You know, my response is, well, when is? The years that I've been on the board, none of them have been really pleasant in terms of looking at dollars and, and things happening. So I don't see that changing, and I see this continuing as every year being challenging and difficult. So I don't know, when is a good year to do anything like this? And if, if people can pull themselves out of the budget challenges and look at this and say, what is the best model of delivery of instruction to our kids? I'm gonna subscribe to that if that's the recommendation that's made. Um, you know, in terms of looking at, at what's going on in the state or even other schools in our own SU, um, to, to me, everything is local. Everything is local. And let's look at what's going on in Heinsberg. And, you know, obviously, I and some of us are cognizant of what's going on in other schools. We even talked about it a couple of weeks ago at a meeting, but, but we're the only school with an increasing enrollment. I mean, let's, let's focus on that. So if other schools' budgets are going up and ours is going up, we can at least say one of the principal reasons why ours is going up is because we need to pay for more instruction. Uh, if, if our increased costs are a result of increased enrollment, that's a good thing, and I'm willing to stand up and sell that to an audience that needs to hear it. And if our increase, if we don't increase our cost to pay for those increased instructional costs, guess what? Our enrollment's not gonna be increasing for very long either. So, yes, it costs more money to, to educate those students, but if we don't spend the money, the quality of instruction's gonna go down, and those families and kids will start leaving town, which is not a situation we want to be in again. Um, yeah, the, the other thing that I've said from time to time is that, and, and, and what I will try to focus on to the extent I'm the messenger is, we can only control what we can control. And what we can control is this, all the stuff we talked about tonight. And that's why we focus on the budget-to-budget numbers, not necessarily on the tax rate. I think it's, it's, uh, a disservice to our community to ignore the tax implications, but we need to explain those tax implications as affected by all of the different components, only one of which we, we have control over. And I think we have good reasons for telling people what our rationale is for the budget number that we pass. We can explain how that affects them otherwise and why, but we don't have control over that. Um, finally, you know, as, I, I'm hearing all the desires, and I don't disagree with any of the good reasons to spend all of the money that is requested here by all the decision packets, but as everyone else has said, I'm terrified of Australian ballot. And we've never had it before, but we're all cognizant of what's happened locally with other school districts in Chittenden County that have gone through this before, that have had budgets turned down. There's only one way to go once it gets rejected. It's not like we're gonna come back here and spend more money. So, it, we, we gotta put our best foot forward and try to pass it the first time, because if it doesn't pass, they won't only sit in here looking at cutting things. Uh, you know, not surprisingly, you know, maybe Jeff's hearing it from me, but I'm at the three percent number. I think I always have been. I haven't made that terribly public, but, but I'm at three percent. I don't like these tiers very much. I'm happy to give the administrators direction on what I think is the right, but I'm very cognizant and wary of micromanaging. But if you're looking for my specific feedback on this, I, I'm at the, I'm at the three-point-one-eight number, the tier-two number. I understand you can, you, you might be able to move some things around, but in terms of budget number, I'm, I'm at that number. I would be comfortable supporting the eight-eight-two-three-five-two-six. Questions? Comments? Board members?
I just, you know, a reminder that, two things. One, a budget is a plan. It's, and it's our best guess plan. Um, and, and it's a place to start moving forward for the next year. It doesn't mean that it's the final draft. Um, we'll see the final draft when the doors open in September. The other piece is if community members want to see more from their school, then we need community members to be telling us that is, as, um, you know, from community to the board. And so it's not just five members on the board. I'm so thankful for our budget buddies. I know this is a lot of time on your part. You bring such, um, different perspectives to our, to our work. And, um, you know, as much as I appreciate budget buddies, we also need more. We need others to be paying attention to what's happening in our schools. And I don't know if the Pi can become, um, active, more active in what they're doing related to budgets and so forth, but Pi's already doing a great job. Anyway, it's a community school, we need community input. Thank you. Um, just, I want to say to Jeff and Allegra, I know how difficult this has been for you to put together a budget plan for us. So thank you for your thought and time that you've put into this, and that this is just the beginning. And Bob and Elaine, you too. Thank you.
Do you guys have any further thoughts?
I like the three, the tier-two number. I, I, to me, it's, when you say you have had a six percent increase in school population, saying that your budget's going up by three percent, that's a lot, a lot of people, that's the only thing they're gonna hear, and it might be some positive aspects to that.
I've got one thing I, I want to add, I guess, if this makes sense, but, um, I agree with you, and I also would rather see the six pair educators and keeping the FCS program if that is possible.
All right. Any final thoughts before we move on to article review? Four-point-one-point-three, article review. Mr. Mason, is that you?
Yep. In preparation for this, we'll clean up the dot, the conversation that you've had for the last hour or so. Uh, Jeff, Allegra and I and Mike have to review the Medicaid piece to clearly articulate how much revenue should be in next year's plan. So we'll do that before Wednesday. And then relative to the articles, you already touched on it, you changed the, the journey from this point forward for the Heinsberg Board. You're, you're going to vote, uh, in the Australian ballot on two articles this year that you used to consider on the floor of your town meeting. That will be the budget article for eight million eight, and the fund balance article, where you disposition the prior year's fund balance by either using it as revenue or holding it in reserve. Those two articles, along with those of you, uh, are the, the open slots on the board, will be on the Australian ballot. Your town clerk has agreed, if Sandy and I can work magic with her, to put your items on the ballot that they are using. So there will be one single piece of paper that you're using to vote this year, not two. Um, and, um, you'll see when we produce the articles, there'll be a section that says articles, and then it says ballot articles, and it lists the ones below it that are on your voted ballot when we bring it to you next Tuesday. And that's a review of articles. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay?
Next Tuesday?
No, I mean, next, uh,
Thursday, two days.
Two days from now. Whatever that date is, I'm sorry.
Do you have the direction that you wanted?
Yes, we, we, I, yes, I think I have it. You do have it, huh?
Absolutely.
You know what we gotta do? Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments about article review? All right, five-point-oh, action matters, five-point-one, approve announced tuition.
Sandy, the first package I handed out, the last sheet of paper looks like this, says announced tuition rate. You're required, uh, no later than tomorrow to announce a tuition to all those who want to hear it in the state of Vermont. Um, this sheet reflects the number, uh, with a budgeted baseline. If you will draw a line through the eight-seven-eight-eight-three-three-eight and put eight-eight-two-three-five-two-six, then draw a line through the total allowable cost, six million four fifty-eight. You see that little ways down? Make that six million four ninety-three-four-seventy-three. I've only got one more for you. The announced tuition that you're going to approve instead of twelve thousand six hundred fourteen should be twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars. So I'd love to have a motion in a second to enact that.
So, thank you Kathy, second. Thank you Bill. For all those in favor, say hi. Any opposed? No abstentions. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
Can we, can we get a, a fresh copy of that on Thursday, perhaps, the announced tuition?
Yes, you may.
Or in the minutes or something?
Yes. If there's fresh copies, might you be able to reproduce this school district budget tax rate implications chart as well?
Yes.
And, um, I can't believe we haven't talked about this yet, but will you have one of these?
Along with these details.
Okay, so on Wednesday you'll have, yes, on Wednesday you'll have the change sheet with all the other items added to it to complete it. You'll have the function budget totally eight million eight twenty-three. You'll have the three-year tax pork rate. You'll have Bob's tax rate calculator. You'll have the announced tuition, and you'll have the warnings.
It's a lot to do.
Three days, man.
Two, two, two.
Yes, we'll hold out.
All right, moving on, six-point-oh, consent agenda. Sandy circulated meetings, uh, meeting minutes from these three meetings that are in the agenda for tonight. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which are those items?
So moved. Go.
Go ahead.
I'm second.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill, for the, thank you seconding for Colleen, all those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? Here are none, the motion carries. Seven-point-oh, confirm next meeting dates. We obviously have a budget hearing on January fifteenth. Board chairs has noticed on the twenty-first. I would like to float the idea of conducting another school board meeting at some point in February to prepare for the annual meeting. We have not had a formal meeting before, but I think it might be a good idea to talk about preparing for the meeting in March, and possibly more importantly, talking about compiling a circular that will be mailed to the community. Other communities with Australian ballot conduct that kind of communication, and I think we should think about doing it. Deadlines, I saw some emails, but I can't remember what they were right now. Do you remember?
That's probably something you should talk about tonight. If you want to do that and you want help, I can tell you that every community that's done it in Chittenden South has had the help of a graphic artist. Um, in a couple of years after that, they, some of the communities have taken that on themselves, but they've had somebody work with a board subcommittee and the administration to start teasing out what is it that we want to highlight on a one-page flyer. I highly recommend that.
I was advocating a meeting in order to prepare some feedback and fine-tune such a publication, kind of assuming that we were gonna go ahead and do it. If we wanted to do it by a board committee, I don't have any opposition to that.
I'm suggesting that you hire a graphic artist.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying I, I was sort of assuming, based on what I've heard throughout this year, that we're already inclined to do that. I was suggesting a meeting to then look at a draft.
Two board members working with the administration.
Because then you don't have to warn it.
Yep.
We touched on that one last year.
Yes, yeah.
Is there, is there?
Last year, right?
Is there any objection to use? Is there any objection to using that person to compile? No objection. Do we need to take action on that?
If you give me the go-ahead, I'll contact Marcy and I'll put her in contact with the two of them.
I think you're hearing very clearly.
Okay, and so who would be the board members?
Then that's the next question.
Kathy, are you interested in that again?
Could be.
I'm, I'm happy to do it. I would like to participate in it.
Kathy, please.
So let's do it.
I'll contact Marcy.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so scratch the board meeting if we're gonna then take on that. We will.
Well, given that our first.
But do, do we think we should get together and meet before the, before the?
You will, you will have a board meeting in February, prior to the annual meeting, February nineteenth. And that is on the agenda, planning for the March meeting.
Yeah, the March meeting is less than two weeks after that.
If I could.
The March meeting is going to be.
February nineteenth and then, because March, what is it?
Yeah, why don't we plan on working with you to draft the rough framework of the presentation in March by that February meeting?
Yep.
So you as a board can kinda kick it around and you have enough time to make changes between them and, then in March.
Yep.
And then devote energy to getting the flyer out, developed and out. Um, I think that's a reasonable journey, so I don't know if you need another meeting.
Okay, okay. I, I had forgotten that we had a regular meeting in February. That probably does it.
Let's just make sure we have time at that meeting set aside for us to, no one's left, I'm gonna get a question, have us go. If we can speak to the issues with clarity and succinct manner.
And with slices, we'll have the outgoing board member sitting.
Yes, the, 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 the change, the, one of the effects of the Australian ballot is that it will be this board as currently constituted presenting the budget.
Right, which is positive.
The first time.
Yeah. Stacy, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'd be happy to help in whatever way.
Okay, appreciate that. All right, um.
Are you gonna require food at Wednesday's meeting?
Wednesday's meeting.
No.
I think we can survive.
You think we can survive? Okay.
Save fifty bucks.
We'll save, we'll save, we'll save fifty to sixty bucks. All right, then, I think I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations and personnel. Thank you, Bill.